All right, folks, I'm calling us to order. It is now six thirty on April first, two thousand and twenty five. So welcome to the April first, two thousand and twenty five Planning Commission meeting. Can we move on with the roll?
Acting Chair Chatters. Acting Chair Atkins, please.
Present.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Commissioner Rutledge.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I will read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shahobes people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes for the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Would anyone like to offer an amendment or corrections to the minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion for approving the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Can we go on to a roll call vote? Oh, we don't do that. Sorry. With school board, we still do that, so. Um, okay, hearing no objection for the minutes, they are approved. And then moving on to reports of commissioners, does anyone have anything they'd like to report?
I have an item. I think I emailed Chair Chatters, and I think she forwarded it to you. I would like us to discuss potentially amending our presented zone to council along Airport Road from, what is that, one hundredth-ish? All the way down to ninety-nine, either the parcels that front Airport Road or roughly five hundred feet to from light industrial to MU seven. I can go into why I think that would be beneficial, but, you know, I'd like us to discuss it. I think we discussed it back in November and December. I was under the impression that that was agreeable to us, but a formal movement thereof and what have you, I think, would be beneficial as we present this to council and to the state as well.
And are you asking for that to be discussed at this meeting or at a future meeting?
Uh, this meeting would be fine by me. I'll leave it to staff to tell us whether or not we can do it now or later, or.
Yeah, the discussion is is appropriate today. And so, yeah, if you wanted to start with with some explanation of the of your thoughts there, and staff can give some of our thoughts, and we can go from there.
Sure. So my thought is that along Airport Road, we have, you know, the future movement of our light rail. We have the one paid-for train station that's going to come there. The one at ninety-nine is not guaranteed. It's provisional station. We don't know how we're going to pay for it. And so when we're planning for things between now and the end of two thousand and forty-four, to not have the flexibility that I think MU seven would grant property owners there, I think does a disservice when we're looking at maybe doing transit-oriented development. Or, you know, when you get off and you want to, you take light rail to the airport, you want to find some place to eat, or you want to find some place to stay or similar. And none of those options would exist in light industrial zoning if it's maintained as it is. And I think that does that area of town a disservice economically as the airport continues to grow.
Couple of pieces of context for this. Our action plan, and this was goes back.
Real quick, I, oh, yeah. Could we get the get those streets again?
Sure. So it's a long airport road, and then it's from ninety-nine all the way to the city boundary, which I think is one oh three, one hundredths? Essentially all. Yeah, anything on the in the on the city side. So that's on the north side of Airport Road. Everything else is the county presently. Yep.
Pulling up my own map here. So one piece of context for this, in our work program, in the actions identified in the urban form element includes sub-area planning for the Southwest Everett Industrial Manufacturing and Industrial Center. This is a work that's a little bit overdue from the Puget Sound Regional Council's requirements for maintaining that manufacturing and industrial center designation and procedures for it. We had, I don't think this is written in the plan, but as we have been thinking about that work, which is not the area that you're talking about, just north of there. It's the the large, heavy industrial and some light industrial as well around the Boeing production facility, Hardison, Seventy-Fifth. Seavers do see that whole industrial cluster. It does extend into Payne Field and some unincorporated county land. So this would have to be a joint project with the county. They're aware that this is something that we're both overdue on with Puget in Puget Regional, Puget Sound Regional Council's framework. So we're planning to do that as soon as possible. That might be one of the very first ones because we're overdue on it. When thinking about the scope of that work, and when we're going through the use tables as part of as part of this periodic update, there's a lot about our industrial regulatory framework that we were interested in looking at. Uses that are allowed in the heavy industrial, the light industrial, and the light industrial mixed-use zones. What used to be LI two and LI one, now LI and LIMU. Where those zones are and how to best implement the policies and goals of the urban form element, economic development, and all the rest. A little bit of scope creep, but seems well in line with studying our biggest concentration of industrial area. So we were thinking to do the manufacturing industrial center sub-area plan and tack on to it a review of our overall industrial zoning framework. That could get into the uses, that could also get into things like setbacks and lot coverage. We're still wrestling a little bit as we put the final touches on this, on this plan with the Southwest Everett Industrial Area and the LI zone, what is currently LI two, what we're proposing to rename as LI. Had in the past been envisioned as like a business park kind of a place with lots of landscaping and lots of land prohibited to be covered by buildings. Heavy growth targets, lots of jobs needed, intensification of land is the overall goal and the overall thrust of the comprehensive plan. And so having, I think we're at like a fifty percent maximum lot coverage by building in the LI zone and twenty-plus-foot setbacks and landscaping around buildings and all those sorts of things. Valuable, we want to maintain a green character in that part of town and everything, but that's among the examples of the things that we would be looking at as part of this review of industrial zoning. And then one more step of potential scope creep, but I think valuable would be studying the needs of a growing Payne Field. We are very curious ourselves where, what the right answer is. Payne Field just completed a master planning process about a year ago and is planning for substantial growth, not astronomical growth in this cycle, but substantial and steady growth that eventually is going to reach a tipping point where you're going to need hotels and car rentals and airport serving. Maybe even cargo. That was kind of a question mark for us, how much Payne Field is going to have a cargo component to it. So those were the three. I've wondered if those are the types of uses that we should try to support on Evergreen Way, right down a hundredth, and have like a shuttle to a little commercial cluster that serves folks who are popping into town for a little bit, down Airport Road or Airport Way in the direction that you're talking, or even farther down there, or what? So I offer that that was an opportunity that we were considering to review all of those things altogether in one big project, probably next year. Overall, we have a regional and local policy framework that puts a high value on industrial land. And I professionally agree with it. We have pretty scarce industrial land that's of the size and shape and location and everything to support a really important part of our economy that produces, brings capital into the region, and has big multipliers and everything for other jobs. So I I'm personally pretty hesitant to release any industrial zoning without very careful study. So I think the staff recommendation will be at this time to to leave it as light industrial. There are also some of the implications of that include that all of the uses that are in the mixed urban zone, which are lots and lots and lots of things. And I could definitely see a situation where other non-airport and non-industrial type uses start to locate there. And and we don't get any. So I'm not exactly sure. That's why we would need to do some work on what the right answer to get. If we do want to transition some of that area into airport-serving uses, which is jobs, it is tax revenue and tax base and all of those things. So some context and an initial staff recommendation on that. But happy to hear what other thoughts you and the commission have, and we can definitely raise this with the council and broaden the conversation within city government as well. Check in with our economic development folks and the county would be a part of that whole next year study as well.
Can you remind me, as part of the sub-area planning process, what could come from that planning document? Zoning changes or?
Yeah, yeah, it would be an element, a sub-element of the comprehensive plan. So just like we'd have the gold goals and policies and maps that would have implementing rezones and changes to the development regulations and everything.
Localized policies.
Yeah. Could have infrastructure needs more specifically. So this comprehensive plan covers the entire city. But when you start to zoom in on a particular area, you check up on particular projects that had been missed, or maybe reprioritize some things now and conversations with the community and the businesses and everything there, too.
How many different areas would we be looking at? Just the airport area or?
In this study?
Yeah, if we, when we get to this.
Yeah, I I I see it as the place of the Southwest Everett Industrial Center, which is north of the area that we're talking about right now. The concept or the the industrial zoning, wherever it is in the city.
Yeah, but like where's?
The airport.
So it's Boeing, the airport, the port, the other side over by Smith.
The industrial areas?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much the entire waterfront and riverfront all around the peninsula, all of Smith Island, a little bit down by Lowell, along the railroad tracks heading south along like Smith Avenue and and some of those areas. And then the big, the big one, which is the Southwest Everett Industrial Center, which has a a finger going south on Airport Road.
So I could see like there actually different areas of the city, right? So the zoning that bumps up to these is going to be in, okay, different.
And the biggest questions that we have is around the southwest. I I feel like the riverside and waterfront and all of that is in a pretty good place in Smith Island. It's probably worth its own sub-area planning process at some point. I'm not sure that that's ripe yet, but so I think the focus of this whole thing would be mainly in the southwest.
Any additional remarks?
Yeah, I'm happy to hear what what other kind of thoughts you have. And 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 the basic idea was to start to move in the direction of the airport and start to recognize its growth and start to capitalize on it a little bit, right?
Yeah, also, you know, prepping for for the light rail, right? Because if you look at at least as a consumer, I think not necessarily industrial, it's not going to happen next to light rail in terms of its use. But for movement to jobs, I was thinking about, you know, with what's planned out. You know, you're two to three stops away after you get to Payne Field from meal, lodging, recreation at a minimum. And that seems not friendly to a pedestrian-oriented, you know, method of transit. So.
Correct. And Sound Transit has just published a set of TOD-oriented policies and programs for putting together the plans for those station areas. And they are more mixed-use than industrial-sided, but at the same time, we will have to be focusing on the primary uses of that area. And so there might be some pocket that gets a commercial entity close to a stop, but the rest stays or something to that effect.
You know, I'm not knocking that. I I'm wondering if it's in the best interest of the city, though, to give two of them to light industrial, right? Because we're going to have, we have paid for in the expansion, the one here at Payne Field and the Boeing stop, which is going to be at Sehurst, right? Like, I know there's not a ton of land there. We've got Hardison and the rest of that. And you know, whatever ends up being Operation Main Facility North, and then the station over potentially by Fred Meyer or what have you in in five twenty-six. But I'm just curious if it is staff's opinion or the city's opinion that the best use of those two stops is all light industrial, because I think as it is now, that's what's going to happen. And we're two years away from the draft DAS for rail. We're less than ten from deployment. And, you know, this is supposed to take us seven years past in planning. So it's something to think about, right? Like now. That's all. I mean, that's that's my concern, right?
It'll be a two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven sort of project, yes.
And our Economic Development Director has is interested at in the potential of reimagining the Southwest Everett in station, Southwest Everett Station, Southwest Everett, Southwest Industrial Station, SWI. Depending where it locates, that's the one that has the biggest separation between its potential, all the way from a hundredth at the south, the one in the middle that nobody really likes, and then the one right across the freeway from Boeing. Those two at either end are very different locations with very different relationships. The one that the city is pushing for, the one right across from Boeing, which I think has has the nod as the preferred at the moment. That's where, at least I've heard some conversation around, could that be broken up the superblocks and made into a small block mixed-use kind of an area? When I'm in those conversations, I remind folks the importance of our industrial base. Half of that land is institutional. It's bus yards and and maintenance spaces and there's a couple of school bus yards and things like that, you know. So I think it's it's absolutely something that we need to think about. I, the staff's recommendation only is time and pace on that to make sure that we're very thoughtful about how we do it.
So you're, so if I understand, you're wanting to wait to make that decision, is is it? Is it the hopes that it wouldn't change while you're doing that? And and as industrial, it would less have less of a chance of changing? So if you change the zoning, that you would lose something or lose control of that?
I wouldn't want to change zoning and change it back. Not that that's the worst thing in the world. I mean, it's it's within our authority. Industrial to mixed-use is a comprehensive plan. So we have our residential mixed-use and industrial are the three designations in the comprehensive plan. So you can change intensities within those without going back to the comp plan. But when you switch from one to the other, it's a comprehensive plan change. That would be okay as well to go back and forth with this with the sub-area plan that would be touching the comprehensive plan anyways. You could definitely see permits come in for something that was neither airport-serving nor industrial, and then that land would be converted from industrial. We would hope to potentially see industrial development during that time. So those would be kind of the hesitation. Stability and the potential of change that wasn't what we were looking for. There is the light industrial mixed-use zone that is one step closer than the light industrial zone. And that was, was that the?
I believe that was my intent. Yes, you could do both, right? Like light industrial or mixed-use. So I apologize for using the wrong terminology.
Right, yeah. No, and I I, yeah.
Would we be able to recapture if if this were to go to the MU or to the to a mixed-use? Would would we replace the industrial in another part of the city, or would it just be lost?
It would be difficult to do that on this timeline of the next couple of months to identify another place to re-designate as industrial. In the draft use matrices of nineteen oh five, we have light industrial use allowed in the mixed urban zone for the first time. Mixed urban zones. That is intended to permit mostly small-scale manufacturing and assembly, not the big warehousing is a different use and would not be allowed, but assembly and manufacturing and other non-noxious types of industry. So it couldn't be big smokestack stuff, but it could be. We've just run into a lot of those food processing, mushroom production. Could be someone wants to churn out lawn gnomes or something, and that would be just fine on an Evergreen Way or something like that. So we are broadening our industrial base in a small way with that, and that could be a balance for this. I could go down the uses that are allowed in light industrial mixed-use, but not light industrial, if that would help kind of clarify this. I do think it's a different story, light and Lima versus MU. I'm so sorry if I had heard the wrong.
No, you did. I was in, I was, I had previously said it both in email and here MU, and my intention was light industrial mixed-use. So, yes, like the allowing both of them or or a combination of those for those properties, not forcing them all to non-industrial use, because I agree that losing that much industrial property would be a disservice to the community as well.
Uh, so if if you'd like, because the the next agenda items are relatively short, if you want to linger on this topic for a moment, I could work through a couple of those uses, or I could send it to you in an email afterwards for your review for the next two. I think this is the kind of thing that can be changed up until in in our next couple of meetings as well.
Well, on the land use map, it still would show as industrial. So it's not a comp plan change to go from L one to LI mixed-use. So that is easy. It's so we don't have to do a major change there. It's more the zoning category. And that way you can see exactly what's permitted, which gives a wide variety, but it does not allow under mixed-use, you can have a lot of automotive-related uses, which would not necessarily be appropriate, car washes, some of those kinds of things which this would not permit. And so it would give, but it, and it doesn't necessarily allow a cafe or a deli or something to serve those areas. What we have under development agreements permitted those in other areas that are industrial, so that people don't have to go for miles to get a sandwich.
Hotels, one example, allowed in light industrial mixed-use, not allowed in light industrial. That's probably the most obvious airport-serving use. There's some that go the other direction. Automotive impound storage and tow yard allowed in light industrial, not Lima. Same with heavy truck and equipment sales allowed in light industrial, not Lima. Entertainment and Recreation enclosed in buildings allowed in Lima, not in LI. Lodging.
You can have your trampoline in the center. Or your indoor pickleball.
There's not a lot of difference. I mean, this is kind of what we're hoping to sort out next year. What is the real? Half of the stuff is in the setbacks. We had the area under under US two at the river, that cluster that's not the Everett Station District, but it's across I five. We had that in as light industrial, which was fine because it's less of a mixed-use appropriate area. But the setbacks and those business park-type development standards for light industrial would have made development impossible there. So just because of that, we switched it to light industrial mixed-use. For some of this was made north versus south, more than like intense versus not. Some of it was Everett Station District and an area in transition in time and place between light industrial and mixed-use. And I, we just need some time to sort that out. In the meantime, I toned down some of the concern going from light industrial to Lima. Quite a bit of that, I guess, compared to mixture. So if it's something, I mean, this is something that the Planning Commission could put on the record as a recommendation, even if you don't, I will surely staff will take a closer look at this. We will put together some, it's a good exercise anyways, that better understand this. So we can put together some information on it and share that with the council as one of the topics, too.
Yeah, and if we could, you know, if we could ask them for some direction as well, right? If they think this is an important thing to take a look at, like priority assigned to us, we're here to help them. So, right, yep.
And did we want to take a formal position on this, though?
I I would not ask that of this body at this time.
Any additional reports of commissioners? All right, we'll move on to staff comments.
Most important one, almost done. We have our, and this is a milestone. I'm not sure how many elements we have, twelve, maybe thirteen, fourteen in this comprehensive plan. Tonight, we have the very last one, goals and policies and actions for you, public facilities and services. And this was a doozy to get through in the last couple of weeks, lots of coordination, city departments, lots of and outside of the city. So anyways, I won't get into that, but I'll just say that this is the last element. We are planning to publish the draft on Friday of the comprehensive plan and the development regulations that are proposed as part of Everett two thousand and forty-four. We had said last Friday, but need a little bit more time to get that done. We met with the council there earlier. I think it was on March nineteenth, meeting was extended to March twenty-sixth to work through council amendments to the early draft package. Most of those amendments were focused on the on the proposed zoning map. A couple more were moved by the council and approved by the council to amend this package that will go to the state and to Puget Sound Regional Council this Friday, and those include nineteenth has been from a hundredth at the north to a hundred and twenty-eight, so just north of Fred Meyer. Everything that was mixed urban fifteen has been reduced to mixed urban seven at the request of council members Arlingo. Both sides of of nineteenth cited in that were, as reasons were traffic, people just cannot figure out how to turn the wheel when the road turns, and they keep running into the lake. And more traffic and more people would result in put more potential for issues, although I think we've got maybe some design work to try to handle that even for the population that we do have. And then just some kind of compatibility and adjacency. We've talked long about the next door being single-family zoning in the county and some other places like that. So that was reduced in the central part, fifteen remains on one hundred and thirty-second, or is it one hundred and thirtieth there, one hundred and thirty-second? And up north from a hundredth to be, I can't remember the name, but north, the red part. Yeah, it's a freeway, pretty much. That was balanced with an increase for the Bethany Northwest property. And there is a roads shore heights, Lake Shore Heights, Lake Shore Heights, with a couple of, I don't know, twelve or so parcels on it. So that was included, and all of this went up from UR four to UR seven. And then And then uh, there's also a property that's not Bethany. It is a apartment or condominium complex. Uh, waters, Waterford, yes. Um, so Waterford, Bethany, and then the parcels along Lake Shore Heights. Were all increased from UR four to UR seven, which kind of matches, that means most of the corridor, is it about that seven? So the council uh, uh, moved, voted and approved that change. There was some more discussion about neighborhood commercial and the council continues to consider limiting neighborhood commercial to arterials. And there was one kind of compromised position discussed, which was within a couple of blocks or five hundred feet of arterials. Arterials would be all the classifications down to collector. There's also a couple that seem oddly missing from the arterial map, which is Walnut, a hundredth and uh, section of federal. So the discussion was around reducing it. They did not come to a decision on that. This will continue uh, at their, at some upcoming council meetings, we'll continue to um, support that discussion. I think, I, I can't remember if it was done in the nineteenth or on the twenty sixth, but there was also a row of properties south of Everett High School on Hoyt. That were increased from seven floors to fifteen.
Twenty six.
Twenty six, thank you. And then the parking lot across the street from the Everett Public Library was increased from seven to fifteen also, I believe. So overall and Muckelteo Boulevard on the nineteenth was decreased from UR four to an a neighborhood residential. Glenwood, Kenwood were increased from four to seven. The mobile home park policy was added, asking staff to develop regulations to protect mobile home parks from conversion to other uses. And that discussion about neighborhood commercial and arterials.
Wait, hold on, go back to the mobile home thing.
Yes.
Where, where are you with that?
There are three mobile home parks in the city, and we were requested to look at putting overlays on them.
Right.
I did a whole host of research after that meeting and actually during the meeting, sorry. Um, and discovered that we can put overlays on them. It does not necessarily protect them.
I see, because I, the, one of those requests came during our uh, neighborhood meetings about the Silver Lake.
So it's like saying to a business owner, you have to o- run a business in perpetuity. Which you can't make somebody do that.
Right.
And if they choose not to run that business. That there is a ramification for, unfortunately for the people that are there. But there are, under state law, there are options for buyouts for how long it takes that you sell the property. Um, and those types of things. And so, and it, you can also limit the number of uses that are permitted in those un- in those overlays. And s- some of them are schools, television antennas. Um, really mundane type of things in order to basically say, you're using your highest and best use essentially. But we can't require them to continue to operate a manufactured home park.
So correct me as I go.
Mm-hmm.
So let's just talk about the one Silver Lake on both sides of the freeway.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna move those to UR four?
There would be a new, uh, so what we've done so far, we've added a policy.
Looking at older maps, so please.
It's pretty close, yeah. Um, we, so far we've added a policy that reads protect manufactured slash mobile home parks from redevelopment into other uses. So that is what kind of sets us on this path, and that is what will be in the package that goes to the state this Friday. We will have to catch up with regulations. It doesn't have to be as part of the periodic update. It can lag by weeks or months or something like that, although I know this is at uh, an urgent situation in some cases. Um, it would entail, as I understand it, putting a zone called mobile home park
Mm-hmm.
on certain properties and deciding which ones is one of the biggest pieces that we need to figure out. Not necessarily deciding which ones, deciding how you decide which ones fairly and appropriately. Then that mobile home park zone would say the only use that is allowed here is mobile home park. So you cannot compel them to continue to operate, but you can remove the opportunity to uh, to close the park and redevelop it into townhouses or houses or something more valuable.
Okay, okay, that's good. I think that from the initial conversation, that's essentially, you know, anything is better than nothing.
Yeah. So it won't protect um, rent increases, uh, tenant protections. All those things are separate. There are some things that we can do under state law, lots of things that we can't do. Um, there's also uh, working with nonprofits to try to help. I, I guess that fell through for Silver Shores or maybe an early uh, attempt did, but the opportunity to get the residents to purchase or things like that. This is a small step that will um, remove one threat, if you will, to the park, but not all of them. Silver Shores, I think, was one of, or if, if not the genesis of this, so I would expect that one to be on the list. Which other ones um, uh, within the city, I don't know yet.
That's where the turtle crossing happens.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. Uh, shows the value of uh, of neighborhood meetings and bringing people together.
They need to get an endangered species.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Right. So that, those were so far at least, um, and it, this was a partial package, so they didn't have everything in front of them. And certainly not in the most easy to consume format, but you can get a flavor of what those uh, early issues that the council saw. Um, they may still make more changes. Uh, they will, uh, when we send this out to the state and everything, we're gonna launch the biggest uh, comment period of this process, uh, which means we will spam everybody. It's not spam at that point. It is valuable information. We will send notice of the comp plan and the development regulations. And I would expect people who have not been engaged so far to maybe take notice of it. I would expect potentially some press around it. That's the kind of thing that will find its way to the council and maybe to you as well. We are preparing public comment reports to organize everything that we've received over time. So we've been collecting, considering and working this kind of public comment into this whole project. Uh, but we want to make sure to share that in summary and detailed form with both the planning commission and the council, so. Uh, Danielle is working on that right now. Hopefully not right now, but these days. So that was the March twenty sixth meeting.
All right, do we have anyone signed up for public comment, online or offline?
No, we do not.
All right, moving on to Everett twenty forty four, public facilities and services element. I'll turn it over to staff.
Hey, thank you. Last element, public facilities and services. That is uh, our proposed name for what the Growth Management Act calls the Capital Facilities Plan Element and the Utilities Element. In our existing twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, uh, those are combined into the Capital Facilities and Utilities Element. So we propose keeping that combination, uh, and naming it with something a little bit more accessible to the general public. Uh, requirements for this el- these two elements are laid out in, in uh, RCW state law and in the Washington Administrative Code Agency rules, and they include uh, inventories, forecasts of needs, proposed locations and capacities of expanded or new capital facilities. At least a six-year plan, uh, financing plan for delivering needed facilities and a requirement to reassess the land use or urban form element if probable funding falls short of meeting the needs. The types of um. Just a quick moment. The types of public facilities and services that are included. Include, uh, provided by the city of Everett, police and fire protection, library and general local government services. Uh, provided by the city via enterprise utilities are the water system, the sanitary sewer si- service and stormwater management. Provided by uh, special school districts, our public K through twelve schools, Everett and Muckelteo School Districts. And then we have uh, parks provided by the city and transportation provided by the city, both of which have their own elements. The parks, recreation and open space element and the transportation element. Then there are utilities which include electric utility provided by Snohomish PUD, the gas utility from Puget Sound Energy. Solid waste provided by contract through Rubitino and waste management, depending where you live. Um, and telecommunications provided by a whole bunch of providers. We have uh, that going down that line is kind of um, more control, less control. More control at the front, less control at the end, more dependent and more important for uh, managing growth in the beginning. And uh, utilities, it was a little bit confusing to me what the difference between a capital facility and a utility is, or a public service and a utility. As I gleaned from lots of reading on this, utilities are kind of always available, not usually capacity limited in any major way. You have development, you run a uh, power wire to that development and you can handle it. Yes, there are transformer needs and there are uh, ultimately you could run out of power at some point. PUD is working on all of those things. Um, but they are more immediately demand responsive. The water and sewer and stormwater have long lead, uh, expensive durable facilities and equipment that needs to be planned for, so they are in that capital facilities bucket. The element helps ensure the practicality of our uh, land use plan, make sure that we have the ability between all of those different providers to uh, serve the housing and employment growth and other needs of the city and cure existing deficiencies if there are any. And then meet those uh, growing needs. The farther out you get in the planning period, the less uh, de- definition we have and we expect. So most of the financing plans are focused on the first six years with a little bit less of an adequacy test for the full twenty year planning period. Um, the short version of all of this is that we uh, do have the ability to serve the urban form element and the projected population and employment growth. Uh, there are in places some need for new revenues or demand management or some things, but it is within our capacity to deliver. We have goals and policies and in your packet you see uh, three exhibits. We have the goal alignment sheet that you're familiar with that looks at uh, upstream regional and state goals for the function. We have draft goals and policies, and then we included a policy change tracker in this one because someone might otherwise wonder, where did all the policies go? This one was a meaty element. Um, I don't know that I've counted the words on all of these, but the public facilities or the capital facilities and utilities element of our existing plan had fifty-five hundred words of goals and policies and objectives and implementation actions. Um, I think we trimmed that down by about eighty percent to the goals and policies that are proposed that you have here. What happened to all the rest of them? Um, we tracked just about all of them down elsewhere in our current proposed comprehensive plan.
And they were repeated a lot, even in the same.
And there were some who were repeated, yeah. Uh, some of them seemed appropriate. They were kind of more explanatory than a policy. So maybe they were appropriate to move to element text, which we have done. What's an example? I'll give one example. Um, in our current capital facilities and utilities element, policy six point four point one says when adverse impacts to the environment are considered likely as a result of the capital's facilities project, the city shall use a preferred order of mitigation per the city's critical areas ordinance, which is avoid, minimize, rectify, reduce overtime and compensate. We had a very similar policy in our proposed urban form element, maintain a policy and regulatory approach that mandates an overall net no net loss in functions, value or area. For aquatic resource critical areas, use the Washington State definition of mitigation, including a mitigation sequencing approach. Avoid, minimize, rectify, reduce overtime and compensate for unavoidable impacts. So we thought that that covered uh, this topic, it, the urban form element and this policy applies just as well to capital facilities and utilities as it does to private development. So that is kind of the thinking there. The bold text that you see in a lot of these helped to wade through uh, fifty-five hundred in one column and another uh, three thousand words in the other column and try to zero in on what the topic of the policy is. So that's kind of where you, that is not gonna stay into the final plan, but it kind of helps draw the eye to what uh, any given goal or policy's main topic is. I don't think, I wouldn't say that we had any major changes in our approach to capital facilities planning as part of this update. Um, we evaluate our capital facility needs across all of those continuously. We are in the process of uh, the very last stages of updating our uh, sanitary sewer comprehensive plan. That is with the State Department of Ecology for their review and will be adopted pretty soon. So that's one example. Our last water system plan was just a couple of years ago and will be adopted again in a couple of years. Parks, recreation, open space, same thing. You'll notice the very first policy is uh, a, a direct link to those other elements that uh, themselves address many of the requirements in state law, and those are the comprehensive water plan, sewer plan, surface water comprehensive plan. And then the two school district capital facilities plans. Those are the uh, capital facilities necessary for growth. So that's why they have a little bit of an enhanced reference there. And the entire element, um, did not share that with you because we haven't been, but that will be in the package this Friday. And will include lots of tables, inventories, maps, discussion and all of that. So you can learn all about what helps make the city run. That is all I have in terms of an overview of this.
Any questions or comments from commissioners?
I got a quick question on the, on the comp plans from like this, the schools and stuff. Um, or do we need to be concerned with, and I don't know if they produce from what, comp plans from Everett CC and the Wazoo extensions or not, since that's it. If there's any more growth or something like that, like, do they have comp plans that they share with us?
They have master plans, yes, and we do work with them on theirs.
Yeah, so we have, I, I would call it informally, and we met with uh, Washington State University just a couple of weeks ago. Everett Community College is currently updating their, their master plan, so we coordinate closely with them on both local zoning issues and how, you know, can we build the buildings that we would like to on this campus as well as understanding the future enrollment possibilities.
Any additional comments or questions? One's going twice.
Although those plans exist, they are not required under the whack to be incorporated here.
That's what I was wondering, if we're required to.
No. But for land use purposes, we do coordinate with them on their whole plans.
All right, do we have anyone signed up for public comment in person or online?
No, we do not.
All right. Well, that finishes up with uh, the public facilities and services element. Now on to regulations.
Yes. This was uh, an optimistic, or this was based on our uh, trajectory. I was, I've been cr- cranking very, very hard on the comprehensive plan and the development regulations themselves. Um, we, I think wrapped up chapter eight this morning finally completely. Uh, with the land use team, chapter eight is the one that is the neighborhood residential zone. I was thinking to potentially walk that through with you this evening, um, but I don't think I was able to put it together in a way that would have been productive. Um, I think what would be best is if we have the rest of the week to complete everything and then give you some time to read it ahead of time. Um, because having you follow along in the meeting would not have been a proper use of time. So I apologize for having that on the agenda, but not getting to it. We are racing the clock. I think we are going to uh, be okay here. So my request would be to defer this item until our next meeting, at which point it is going to grow into a massive item. Uh, at that meeting, we can expect the complete, uh, we'll give you a strike through drafts of everything as well as a clean copy of everything. We'll also We'll also have the complete comprehensive plan with all of the elements to discuss. So if we want to talk at all about what you would like to see out of that other than clearly more time with it than we have been able to deliver agenda packets for you. But I think we can send you, for example, you will be CC'd and we can consider that kind of part of your packet for the April fifteenth meeting would be the, the package that we put together this Friday. So if that's okay, I would, we can talk about other parts about this if you would like, but from staff's perspective, we could defer this into a larger conversation.
What goes to the state is a draft. And it is intended to be a draft, and they will put their comments in at the same time that you will be reviewing and putting your comments in. So it does not become final until the council says it's final. But we can't do it without, and we have to give them thirty days. So although, or sixty days, even more. So although you haven't seen the entire draft, you've seen all the goals and policies and everything else, it's just the explanations around it. So.
I have one question that I've been thinking about. At the end of the day, are we making building houses easier? I know that's like a little general, but go ahead and change the word that you want. Are we taking, removing barriers that don't need to be there? Are we streamlining processes? Is it going to be easier for somebody to walk into the permit office and get a permit for something? Because it's clearer and straightforward.
I can say unequivocally, from my perspective, yes.
Right.
On both the, the big zones and the little zones, there are different tracks and different paths, but with both of those, we have set it up in a way that is both simpler, clearer, more consistent, more permissive in many ways. We had kind of expected that at the final stages is often when things get dialed back. We're doing our capacity analysis to see where we're at with, with reasonable capacity. But I, short version, yes.
That, yeah, I think that's really important because we can't grow unless we can actually build. And are we taking the things that are stopping people from building out of the picture because they don't make any sense? I'm hearing yes, unequivocally, yes.
And that was what we, it'll be interesting, and I've done it a couple of times, looked back to when we chartered and scoped and began this project. Commissioner Atkins would be the one who's stuck with it this entire time. And it started and it will end with housing, that has been our focus and that has been our guiding light throughout this entire thing as the predominant crisis facing the city.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, I think it seems like we're ready to get out of here. Do we have any public comment online or offline?
We do not. Oh, you do.
All right, you know how this works.
My name is Ishmael Mohammed. I'm a developer and builder invested in Everett. I want to thank, I was gonna stay quiet today, but I do appreciate your, Commissioner, your question. And your question was very pertinent to the planning department. But I think a more reasonable answer or realistic answer would be to ask the community who's building it rather than, means the department is trying their hard level since last six, eight years that I've been watching. But it would be good that some comments are taken from builders and developers and architects and people who are actually involved in the entire process. So that would be a suggestion that I would give. Thank you.
All right, I think we are ready to adjourn. Well, thank you everyone for coming.